Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for November 13th to order. Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Ferguson, I will ask.
Here.
Ms. Ruffin.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Thank you, Watson.
Here.
Thank you, Jackson.
Here.
Thank you, Watson.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Senator President, we have a call.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have some announcements, a number of announcements. Why don't we start with Dr. Bob?
All right. Buenas noches, bienvenidos, good evening, welcome everyone. Felicitaciones a la directora de Wilson Primary School, Kelly Schuler, and master of Richwoods High School, Phil Earhart. Son unos de los líderes de doscientos diecisiete inter-business issues forty leaders under forty class. Congratulations to Woodruff-Wilson Primary School Principal Kelly Schuler and Richwoods High School Teacher Phil Earhart for being among the 2017 inter-business issues forty leaders under forty class. And recognizing Schuler, IBI reports that she is, quote, "an instructional leader and persistent champion for her students." She is commended for bringing focus to social and emotional learning and being a tremendous resource for teachers, staff, and parents. Quote, "Being an educator is not just her job, it is her passion." Social Studies Teacher Phil Earhart demonstrates exceptional ability to engage students using the latest techniques and learning strategies. In addition to classroom teaching, Earhart is sponsor of Richwoods Minorities Academic Achievement Project, MAPP, the school's culture club, the current events club, and a mentor for students in the International Baccalaureate IB Program. Earhart coordinates Richwoods Advancement via Individual Determination, or AVID, college readiness program, and he is one of two Richwoods advisors and a board director for APS GO, the student-led entrepreneurial business.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. Peoria Public Schools is seeking energetic, responsible, professional adults to apply for guest or substitute teacher positions. Applicants must have a bachelor's degree, but no experience is required. Guest teachers are needed for all grade levels from pre-K through high school. Rates are very competitive, starting at $130 per day, and long-term and reserved positions are also available. Visit peoriapublicschools.org for more information on obtaining a substitute certificate and the application process.
Thank you. Ms. Ruffin?
Parent University will be held this Thursday, November 16th, at the Greater Peoria YMCA, and a special guest artist will be performing at Peoria High, also on Thursday, and the public is invited. To tell us more, I would like to invite to the podium Dr. Tanya Jenkins and the host principals for this month's Parent University.
Good evening, good evening. We're very excited about Parent University. You see behind you the boards that the host schools have made sure that they put up for us, so that you can learn more about their schools. Because our Parent University is growing, we have three host schools this year. So we have, standing behind me, we have Ms. Renee Andrews, who is from Treewind. We have Cindy Clark, who is from Roosevelt, and Fabian Couldn't Be Here, Fabian Daniels, is from Harrison. So all three principals are going to help us out with Parent University. Ladies, can you share a bit, a few things for us?
Good evening, everyone. I do feel privileged that Kelly Schuler, who's in the forty and under, I coached, so that... So now that I'm feeling quite old, and put my glasses on. The November 16th, as they said before, Parent University event will be held at the YMCA located at 7,000 Fleming Lane. This is a location change, so please take note. The buses will leave from this month's host schools, Harrison, Treewind, Roosevelt. They'll also have buses available for Woodruff, Peoria High, and Manual Academy. All buses will leave at 4:30 PM, or to be there at 4:15. Be sure to RSVP by Wednesday, November 15th.
Hello, everyone. The highlights for the students at the event will include face painting by Wildstyle and a balloon artist from Unique Twists. There will be book giveaways in English and Spanish. Dinner will include a traditional Thanksgiving meal with turkey and dressing. You won't want to miss putting your name in for a drawing of a full Thanksgiving turkey dinner, including the turkey and all the trimmings, and you must be present to win. Remember, there is a special celebration for the families who make it to all of the Parent University events this year. Parents, be sure to bring your booklets, so it can be stamped. Students, don't forget to get your free dress pass for Friday, November 17th, for attending the event. Please plan to help us kick the holiday off by joining us for a fun-filled event at Parent University on November 16th, 2017, from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM at the YMCA of Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And while we have the attention of, on arts, I'd like to share a few other events that are happening tonight. We have a group of students, our Jazz All-Stars are back in gear, and they are attending tonight at Carver Center, where we have the Western Illinois University combo is performing. So I'll be leaving to go over there and to join them. We also have a group coming in Thursday, this Thursday, starting at 9:30 for our middle schools choirs and band to participate in, and we'd like to invite parents and families to come to that event. It will be at Peoria High, starting at 9:30. And the performers that are coming, I'm working with Daniel Leethi, he's a composer and jazz musician, who works with getting jazz and music in the schools. And we also have on deck, their soloist will be, her name is Pepe Ardenia, and she is known for her real jazzy renditions of, renditions of, of, of some of the songs that they're going to be doing. Also on deck with them is the drummer, who is Dr. Tom Marco, he's the Director of Jazz Studies in Illinois State, at Illinois State University. And also Mr. David Hoffman, on trumpet, has played with Ray Charles for, had played with Ray Charles for about 13 years. So all of these musicians got together to create a group, and we're very excited to be bringing them in to our students, to be able to have an interactive conversation with them while they are also performing. And then the last thing that I wanted to share with you, we also have Peoria Public Schools, our Roosevelt team, teachers, and our Peoria High team of teachers, working to have auditions for the Preparatory School of the Arts. So they are busy this weekend to all the schools doing auditions, so if parents are interested in having their students attend in that area, this is the time to make sure that your students know we'll be coming through their middle schools. Students can audition, obviously, in choral, music, dance, band, orchestra, drama, and visual arts. And the last announcement, that's aside from the arts, I'm also working with, the community piece, working with our Chief of Police and three of our teachers, Ms. Kim Grimes is here, she's here for another reason tonight, but she's working along with Rachel Manning and Karen Lynn, to help us do Thanksgiving baskets again for our families, and we'll be giving over 60 to 70 baskets for Thanksgiving, full turkeys and all the trimmings. We'll be getting those out to families this week, so that they, make sure they can have a, a great holiday kickoff. So really excited, and thank the teachers and the students and Chief Boone's team for helping make that happen. Thank you.
Also, congratulations to Peoria High School's Destiny Edwards, Javier Guyton, and Dance Teacher Debbie Reddington, for raising over $7,000 for coin-appointed Special Advocates of Peoria County at the November 4th Casablanca Dancing With the Local Stars Event. Edwards and Gus Guyton performed a variety of dance styles, from ballroom to hip-hop to hallelujah, good to be alive. The two PSA dance students have been rehearsing with Ms. Reddington on Sunday mornings for two months to prepare for the performance. Casa of the Peoria County provides advocacy services for abused and neglected children. Thank you to this fine team of dancers from the Preparatory School of Arts for supporting this vital organization.
The high school regis, oh, I'll start again. The high school course registration process is now underway for the 2018-2019 school year. Students started receiving their curriculum guide last week. Parents were invited to attend our annual curriculum fair at each high school last week, and now counselors are meeting with students to get them registered for next school year. Course registration is expected to be completed by the end of this semester. And secondly, just a reminder to parents and students that applications for Richwoods High School International Baccalaureate, or IB, program are due this coming Friday, November 17th.
Thank you.
The Warrior Way Cafe at Woodruff Career and Technical Center is open to the public for lunch. Each Thursday that school is in session, come enjoy the delicious menus created, prepared, and served by WCTC Culinary Arts students. This week, students are serving an East Coast feast featuring New England clam chowder, a house-smoked pork chop with cranberry relish, rice pilaf, male-glazed carrots, and Boston cream pie for dessert. Information on submitting a reservation is at peoriapublicschools.org or at facebook.com/peoriapublicschools.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
After that, I don't know what I could read.
Sounds scrumptious.
Peoria Public Schools welcomes grandparents and students, other special family members this week and next at Grandparents Week events. Check your students' school website calendar for specific dates and times.
The annual Five Essential Survey opens Wednesday, November 15th, and will close on January 18th, 2018. The link for the survey will be available on the district and school websites starting this Wednesday. It is important to have a high level of participation from our parents in the Five Essential Survey. In addition, teachers along with students in grades four through 12 take separate components of the survey during the school day. The survey is available in English and Spanish. The Five Essential Survey for parents takes only about 10 minutes to complete. Parents with more than one student in one school may participate multiple times. Parents with students in more than one school may participate in each school. Only one parent per household may respond to the survey. Schools will be making time available in their computer labs to complete the survey. Watch for announcements from your principal and plan to stop by your child's school in the coming weeks to utilize a school computer to provide your feedback and make our school stronger.
All right, thank you. Peoria Public School Foundation is pleased to announce the recipient of the 2018 Classroom Grants and Field Trip Awards, or Grants. Peoria Public School Foundation is awarding nearly $20,000 in classroom grants to teachers in every grade level, as well as special education teachers and deaf and hard-of-hearing classroom teachers. In addition, Peoria Public School Foundation awards $3,600, $3,600 in field trips and experiencing grants. The Field Trip Experience Grant gives Peoria Public School students opportunities they likely would not ever have. For example, WCTC Culinary Arts students will travel to McCormick Place in Chicago to compete in the prestigious Pro Start Invitational. The Peoria High School PSA dance students will experience the performance of a Broadway musical in Chicago. Nursing students will be visiting hospitals and college-level nursing programs, and elementary school students will explore Forest Park Nature Center and Wildlife Prairie Park. Thank you to Peoria Public Schools Foundation, its individual donors, and community grant partners for providing these opportunities for our teachers and students. A reception was held earlier this afternoon in our Professional Learning Center, next to the boardroom there, and here to recognize the winners is Peoria Public School Foundation President, Ms. Cindy Morris.
Good evening, President, Mrs. Ross, Dr. Karat, Board of Education members, audience. Tonight, on behalf of the Peoria Public Schools Foundation, we are happy to be here to recognize the 2017 Classroom Grant recipients. I'd like to recognize a few people present first. We have Kim James from the Community Foundation of Central Illinois. If you could please stand. Our classroom grants are in collaboration and made possible in conjunction through the Rena and Murray Yeoman Fund at the Community Foundation of Central Illinois. As I mentioned earlier, the Yeoman family lives in California, but they're still very much invested in our community through the classroom grant funding, and then they also as well provide emergency funding for our families in need. We also have PPS Foundation Board members, if you could please stand, Andre Allen, Kathy Wiggers, and we have PPS Foundation Staff Member Jenny Adler and Trish O'Shaughnessy. As Mrs. Ross said earlier, we celebrate tonight with a small reception. We have 26 teachers today who were awarded Classroom Grants for Innovation in the Classroom, and we have eight teachers who are receiving Field Experience Grants. Those came about a few years ago with some cuts in field trip experiences. We felt as a foundation that was a way that we could enhance our classroom grant program and help our students and teachers provide those field trip experiences still. Now I'd like to introduce the teachers, and I'll have them come forward, and we'll just have them line up here. At this time, I would like to recognize our principals in attendance tonight. I guess when I read your teachers, or your schools, please stand, and we appreciate your support in encouraging your teachers to apply for our grants, and any family and friends. So here we go. We have Jackie Mockton from Jamison. Jackie? Yeah, you, Jackie, come on up. Let's have all, all this, okay. And next we have Molly Herman from Valeska Hinton. We have Monica Hayes from Richwoods High School. We have Cheryl Holm of Treewind. We have McKenna Harless from Thomas Jefferson. We have Kimberly Keith from Von Steuben. We have Kami Williams from Treewind. We have Kim Grimes from Manual Academy. We have Becky Davis from Lincoln. Kayla Steele from Roosevelt. We have Richie Benson from Quest. We have Deborah Weddington from Peoria High School. Lauren Wolf from Thomas Jefferson. Jane Beilenberg from Thomas Jefferson. Think we're going to have double lines here?
Yeah.
We have Abby Stevens from Manual Academy. And Northmore has a team of four teachers. We have Sarah Lane, Karen Burris, Stephanie Hanselman, and Karen Jackson. We have Carol Folk from Keller. We have Michael Rhodes from Richwoods. Michelle Smith from Thomas Jefferson. Katie Cunningham from Thomas Jefferson. Claire Peters from Northmore. Shelley Dottery was here earlier from Richwoods High School, and Michael P. Smith from Richwoods High School. In addition, some of the teachers that got the classroom grants as well received the Field Experience Grant. Jane Beilenberg from Thomas Jefferson received a Field Experience Grant as well. Catherine Braun from Manual Academy. Kimberly Garcia from Glen Oak. We have our, Yeddy from Medima from Woodruff, who runs the culinary program. Deborah Reddington, she got a Field Experience Grant as well, from Peoria High. And we have Adarun Simmons from Woodruff, who got a Classroom Grant as well. Daniel Danel Sluts, Sluts from Peoria High, Slus? And Lauren Wolf got a Field Experience Grant as well. Earlier I pointed out, I just wanted to point out, the teachers that were the first time to apply for a grant, could you please raise your hand? So we had a lot of first-time grant appliers, which is nice. And then we have some long-term teachers here that, and you know Lauren Wolf, if you'd raise your hand, she's, this is her sixth grant that she's gotten, so. Let's give them all a big round of applause for... Thank you so much. Thanks for coming, your support. I think the teachers are going to leave.
Cindy? I don't know if she can hear me or not. Cindy, I'm going to ask you to remain at the podium, and we'll give them time to come out.
Okay.
Okay, our, our community contribution tonight, I just asked Cindy to remain at the podium, to introduce tonight's Community Contribution Award winner, Ms. Polly Barton. Would you please join Cindy at the podium, Ms. Barton?
Okay.
Ms. Barton, on, on behalf of the Peoria Public Schools, I'm, I'm going to let Cindy do the presentation, and then we'll thank you properly.
Okay. In June, the Peoria Riverfront Museum announced the Every Student Initiative, giving every Peoria Public School student a field trip to the museum. This exciting and generous $250,000 gift from the Barton Family Foundation gives Peoria Public School students the chance to visit the Peoria Riverfront Museum, a chance many may not have otherwise. Tonight, our Community Contribution Award goes to Polly Barton, to express the gratitude for this gift to our students. Polly Barton and her late husband, Glenn Barton, have been strong supporters of Peoria Public Schools and the Peoria Public Schools Foundation for many, many years. Glenn was the chairman of the Peoria Public Schools Foundation Board, and Polly and Glenn were longtime participants and supporters of the Peoria Public School Annual Golf Adding. Glenn was instrumental in the creation, an early pilot program of our very successful Peoria Public Schools Foundation's Horizons Club, which I will forever be grateful for. It's one of my proudest achievements as executive director. Anyone that knows me knows that Horizons Club is near and dear to my heart, and if you haven't seen it, I implore you to see it. We are impacting middle school students' lives with this career and college exploration program. Glenn Barton was also a lead visionary of the Quest Charter School, as you may know. It is difficult to think of many Peoria citizens who have had such a deep, wide, and positive impact on all of our students. With the Every Student Initiative, students for years to come will benefit from the gift of the Barton Family Foundation. I know, since I've been working in the school district, for me, one of the best things the foundation can do is enhance experiences and opportunities for our students. It can change their lives. And for me, it's very personal, Glenn was a very big mentor and role model for myself, and Polly, and, and he have been very close friends for a very long time. I know that when we lose loved ones, a little bit of us stays broken, but I find that, my personal opinion is that the broken are a little bit more evolved. And at this time, I'd like to congratulate you, Polly, on the Community Contribution Award.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. On behalf of the Peoria Public School Board of Education, thank you and your family for making a great experience available to all of our students. And Dr. Karat has a small token of our appreciation for you. And Dr. Karat has a small token of our appreciation for you.
I didn't think I'd have to make any. Believe it or not, Polly and I have something in common. We're actually, people won't believe this, we are shy and, I shorten words, but you're a true supporter of Peoria Public Schools. We really appreciate you. I mean, come on, $250,000 and she said she'll do it again as long as it's successful and kids are learning and having an amazing experience. And so far, we've gotten feedback from the museum. The numbers are far exceeding the visits from previous years and, and we just wanted to say thank you. Like Cindy, we love Glenn also and, and actually, those of you who did not know, Mrs. Barton taught for us at Central. She reminds me from time to time from Peoria High. But, a small token, I know you have a lot, but this one is special. It says, "Peoria Public Schools Community Contribution Award 2017-2018," but it's actually personalized. It has your name on it and it's kind of small and cute. So thank you so much on behalf of the board and Peoria Public Schools and all of our faculty and students. You're welcome.
Thank you again. Dr. Karat, you're up again on Most Improved Attendance.
Selena, actually, was student board member. She's going to help me, but what I'll do is I'll just stay right here. I could've taken it with me. But I am really excited to report that our principals, our classroom teachers, our interventionists, parents, and our students are continuing to work very, very hard and as a result, we're seeing improvements on student attendance. And so we're here to acknowledge our top three buildings, that out of the 27 buildings, they, we're going to recognize the top three. So here, here we go. And in comparison to last year, October 17th attendance numbers, when we compared 2016 to 2017, Roosevelt Magnet School earns third place. So they, they've raised their attendance from 91.55% to 93.7%. So they've actually realized a 2.17 percentage gain. So that's awesome. So let us give Ms. Clark and her team a round of applause for reading. Come on, Ms. Clark, again. I know you're hosting Parent University, but I wanted to congratulate you, encourage you, say we appreciate all of the hard work. And I, I know it's not easy, trust me, we know it's not easy. So tell us what you're doing.
Well, I think it's a good point to say, the reason kids come to school is Horizons Club, because they go on the Peoria Riverfront Museum trips and they look forward to things that enhance the everyday out-of-the-box thinking. So they look forward to those things. And so, not that we're wonderful and everything, not good enough for them, but, you know, it is nice to look forward to things and know that you're gonna go out and learn a whole bunch more about things you never knew about.
You are one. You guys are wonderful. You have a great team, great staff, and you're moving in an amazing direction. I'm seeing the improvements every day, so thank you. Thank you for your vision, your leadership, and keep plugging away, hard work, you know.
Keep giving the kids opportunities.
There you go. Thank you, thank you. So congratulations again to Roosevelt Magnet School, Principal Clark and her team. In second place, Calvin Coolidge Middle School, they earned second place, raising their attendance rates from 90.64% to 93.4%. So they've seen a 2.7% increase. So congratulations to Mr. Swanson's team. Principal Swanson, please come up. And, well, the entire Calvin Coolidge team, why don't you guys stand, stand, go ahead and join him at the podium? Thanks for coming out. That's pretty impressive. Yeah, come on, guys, and stand and support your principal. And, Mr. S., can you tell us what's the magic for winning second place?
I think Cindy kind of set us off on the opportunities we give our students in the classroom beyond, but my, I'm as strong as my team and my staff and they're really pushed and do things that we ask and they've really bonded, as you can see. We have some characters here that are fabulous persons.
I love it.
That love their children.
Can you, I love it. Can you introduce your team? I see assistant principal, yep, assistant principal.
Brenda Ingles, fifth grade teacher.
I'm Ms. Ingles.
Jessica Oberholzer, who's our family court counselor who won the award this year for the district for.
Awesome, Ms. Ingles, Jessica.
Tyler Patton, last year's new teacher of the year.
Mr. Patton, awesome.
Wake, who has moved from fifth grade because I begged her to seventh grade and is doing an incredible job.
Awesome.
And these people are just part of a team that loves our children. And that's the biggest thing that we do.
Yes, sir.
And I, I was fortunate enough to step right in there and be part of what they're doing. So I commend them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again to Calvin Coolidge. And then first place, first place and school board members, Selena Ruffin, this is your school, Peoria High School, they made the greatest leap with their attendance rates up 6.26% from 82.2% to 89.4%. Dr. Coleman, can you, it says, "Dr. Coleman and her staff must be running low on spicy hot Cheetos." Can you, can you tell us more about that? And Selena also has the bragging banner.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, yes, uh-huh. Dr. Coleman?
Dr. Karat, Ms. Ross, school board members, just wanna say that we have an amazing staff at Peoria High. We really are the pride of the city. The relationships is a big piece of what we do and so that summarizes what we do. We just try to build relationships, get to know our students, Selena being one of those students that we have to bribe with the hots. So, so that's one of the things that we do.
Thank you so much. Yes. Proud of you and your team. I'm proud of you and your team, Dr. Coleman. Keep up the great work. And then I just wanted to add a special recognition tonight. Currently, we have nine schools in what we call the 95% Club. So these schools are maintaining a 95% attendance rate or higher for the first two months of the school year. And so congratulations to Lindbergh Middle School, Harrison Community Learning Center, Rowan Acres Middle School, Heinz Primary, Chatterok Primary, Washington Gifted, Northmore Primary, Keller and Mark Bills. They've all maintained 95% attendance rates or higher. And it's also note, worth noting that Richwoods and Woodrow Wilson, these schools are only .03 and .02 short, very, very, three hundreds and two hundred of a point from being in that 95% club. So I know that they are, they are working very, very hard. And also, Whittier Franklin and TG are also very, very, very close. So teachers are working hard, administrators are working hard, parents, students, thank you all. This attendance piece is very important for us, so we're proud of the stats thus far. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gershman, grading procedures.
I got your turn. I got your turn.
Tonight, we want to update our board on the grading committee work that we've been engaging in since last spring. We started off by determining that we wanted to focus on a growth mindset with our grading because we've been focusing on growth mindset through our conceptual work in the classroom. Growth mindset is all about not setting time limits on learning, but understanding that students learn at their own pace and we need to be prepared and flexible for making sure that students are learning what they're supposed to be learning, but not making them too time-bound so that it becomes punitive. Part of this, then, the goal was, overall goal for the committee was to think about what our students know and are able to do, because that's really what grading is all about. So the question becomes, are we teaching at the rigor level of the standards? And, and part of the work that we did with the committee was have those conversations. And so that's been, one of the great outcomes of our work is all the conversation we're starting to have now around authentic grading. So we started off with a grading, or guiding committee for grading and we had our curriculum department, the AIOs were invited, and we had our union represented and actually, Mr. McCaw, I believe, is here tonight. And what we did, we had, asked the principals to nominate individuals from each of their buildings and we sent out invitations and if they agreed to be on the committee, then what we did was to go through and make sure that we had all of the grade levels represented. And we had three, that should say, three to four principal representatives also on the committee at the various levels, primary, middle, and high. We did make one adjustment, starting this whole year, and we wanted to make sure also that each building was represented, whereas last year, we did each grade level. So the charge for the committee was to make sure that when they came to the workshop that we had or the work that we did, they were to take back, if we had articles, to take those back to the buildings, share what the conversations were, and then bring that feedback back to the committee so that we had a constant feedback loop going on. And the, the expectation was then for us to make adjustments as we had those conversations. So one of the things our committee did was just start to discuss the purpose of grading. And what we found on the old grading AP, and I know there's a couple folks here that we've had conversations with, was some of it was very punitive in nature and how the grading was done. And also, it was vague on the types of things that could be graded. And so we had a lot of conversation about making sure that, again, our grading was about what students know and what they're able to do. So we read several articles and I put the purpose of grading up there for us. We read articles from Doug Reeves, Robert Marzano, which is, Robert Marzano is the base of our rigor work that we're doing in the district, John Hattie. Both Marzano and John Hattie talk about the importance of feedback over grades. And so that's kind of one of the basic threads that you'll hear me talk about tonight. We also read information from Rick Wormelly, who's one of the leaders in grading, and then Carolyn Tomlinson, who is also a leader in understanding how to differentiate for students, but also how to, how to truly try to understand what students know through the grading process. We also have been reading a book by Tom Schimmert, it's called Grading From the Inside Out. We have a couple copies left in the curriculum department, if you would like to take a look at that. And it's all focused on taking a look at the standards and making sure that we are grading against that standard, but then also making sure our instruction matches the standard. That's the rigor work we're doing. Again, so we're trying to make everything line up. And I, just an anecdote, I had a teacher contact me a couple weeks ago and said, "Oh, you know, I gave a test and the students are not, they didn't do as well on that test as they are doing on the daily work." So we talked through it and what we learned was that there was a little too much support going on and she wasn't working the students up to the test. So that's the work we're trying to do, is to make sure that we're preparing students to be released to demonstrate what they know and are able to do. So the committee came up with some recommendations to give to the superintendent. One of the first things that was an out-of-the-box, big and bold concept, which our superintendent is always encouraging us to think about, was to get rid of the four quarters and go to semester buckets, we call them. The idea here was not to lock in learning time once again, and that way, students had more opportunities to learn and it wasn't, okay, first quarter's done, now I start second quarter and move on. What we had learned from our teachers was that students figured out, if I do decently in first quarter, I don't have to work very hard second quarter and I'm still gonna pass that semester. So in the outcome section, you'll see that this has been very beneficial to have done this. This was a very out-of-the-box kind of a concept to follow through on. We also now average percents instead of letter grades. The letter grades, when those were averaging, they would actually round up all the time. And so, again, you weren't necessarily getting an actual picture of what students were accomplishing. The other thing we did was we gave additional learning opportunities for students. So if they didn't do well on an assessment, teachers would work with them on retakes or fix-ups. So it was all about getting them to understand those standards. It's not about, oh, you didn't know it right then, we're moving on. So one of the outcomes, again, on the outcome page that we learned was, teachers were saying that students were really taking advantage of that, but the teachers were saying they had to come up with a plan of action. They couldn't just retake the test. They had to say, this is what I'm gonna do to study, or I'm gonna come and get tutored with you in the classroom, or I'm gonna go to study tables. So they, they had to come up with a plan of action, which really kind of, we heard from the teachers, was a very positive thing because students were owning their learning more so than just taking that test and moving on. The other thing we changed was, we made sure that students had to participate in their midterms and their finals. This actually was a conversation I had with a parent and I brought this to the committee and the committee said, yes, we felt that this was necessary. It used to be that they could wave out of the final and what the parents were saying was that students were then taking advantage of that and they would get a good enough grade, they wouldn't take the exam, so they never got that practice with rigor on taking that final. So that, that was a new thing that we adjusted this year. We also, there used to just be a final, we're 20%, and we broke that into a midterm and a final so that, again, there was a little less weight on the one test, which was very summative. The teachers can tell you that, you know, the expectation was you had to remember everything from the whole semester. And the other thing we worked on at the high school was to make, to move towards more application-based midterms and finals, and we're still in the process of working on that. The K through 8 really had no grading categories or weighting at all and they could kind of weight things how they wanted. And so the K through 8 worked on setting some category weighting for the K through 8, so there wasn't so random. And, let's see, and we removed some punitive elements. I know I worked with one of our English teachers on even just language about when a student has been discovered to have maybe plagiarized something. It used to be that the student had five days to fix it up. It didn't say anything about how the student had. It didn't say anything about how the student had to be informed about it first. And so, there was just some pieces in there that we had to kind of clean up and make clear, but yet again, more supportive of student learning. The other thing we did at the high school level was give category titles at the high school level. We did not do category weighting at the high school. The high school committee at this time is, feels like with the opportunity to fix up the student's assessments or projects and such, that at this time, they did not want to change the weighting. So after the committee worked, we had informed the superintendent's academic officer cabinet. We took this to principals, assistant principals, and special education coordinators, and we found a few things to tweak and update. And then, once that was all done, we took it to the superintendent. After she approved it, then we created a narrated PowerPoint to make sure that everyone got the same message in every building, and then, that was to be shown the first couple days of the school year. And then we created a parent newsletter also, that explained some of the updates. And some people might say, well, there's more to be done, and there could be. Absolutely, it's, I told everybody at the first meeting, you might be on this for a long time, because to move an entire system through a procedure and to do it well takes time, and so it's very hard to change everything at once. But here's some things that we had, have been hearing about so far. We heard parent conferences are more meaningful, because instead of it being after the fact, after that first quarter grade, students are still in the process of learning, so there was still opportunities for students to improve their grade as the semester was moving along. We also heard from teachers that there's better conversation happening about grading consistencies, and how are you grading, and what are you grading, and that they're having a lot more discussion about that fairness piece, and about what is getting the information that we need regarding students' learning of the standard. We also found from the middle school, high school folks, that our students are working longer over an extended period of time, again, because that bucket doesn't close, and that we are seeing students owning their learning, I mentioned that earlier, by taking advantage of tutoring and fix-up opportunities, and that students are taking the assessments more seriously. We are seeing teachers aligning the targets in the classroom with their practices and the assessments, and that's all, that is deep, deep instruction at its best. When everything lines up, students know what they're to learn, we practice it, and then we assess. And we assess informally, we assess formatively, and then summatively. So we practice until we get it locked in. So I think that, then the student evidence also is another conversation we've been having to make sure we're doing authentic evidence collection. So, this year, our work is to continue to guide teachers on what can and should be graded. We're working on a grading growth mindset, with instead of expecting everybody to know this amount of knowledge by this time period, instead, can we give students maybe a little bit longer, and maybe different opportunities to present the information that they know? And then, feedback. Feedback is the most important thing. As I said, Robert Marzano, John Hattie, we all have seen what happens when that letter grade comes back on the paper, student learning stops. But if you ask guiding questions, and you write those on the paper, I've seen teachers highlight sections of a paper that a student did to revisit, then the student has to go back, spend more time on it, and not just look at that grade and figure that they're done. So that's another piece that we're working on, more so this year, coaching on how to give that effective feedback. And then the other thing we're looking for is opportunities for grade-level teachers to meet, so that they can have more conversations. We added some comment codes this year to the report cards, so that teachers could indicate how well students are progressing. And so, like I said, it's a process, and it's a procedure, but it's a process as we go, and it's, I've had a teacher tell me that her students were very excited about it, because it wasn't a one-and-you're-done. They still had some other opportunities to fix up and redo, so that they still learned the information. So, that's what we're doing.
Any questions, Ms. Gershnik?
You said that you guys were averaging percents rather than letter grades for the high school, but I know that we don't have, like, the two grading periods to go into the semester. So what percents are we averaging?
The beginning, the semester and the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, can you talk more about the punitive elements that you guys removed?
Sure, and actually, Toni's here, maybe she can help with that. But there were different things about how many days a student had to get something turned in to the teacher, and then it was just done and over. So we left that a little more up to the discretion of the teacher to work with the student on that. You know, the idea that a student could have a bad couple days, or maybe something happened in their family, and they did have some bad days and got some zeros, well, research says it takes about 11 100% to wipe out one zero. And so, what we tried to do was to give a little more discretion to the teacher in terms of, let's just make sure the student's learning, and not be so quick to draw that line.
More opportunities also?
Yes.
Minimizing the thing.
Right, right. And we're encouraging more flexibility in thinking about what a teacher can put into the summative section. It can be essays, it can be projects. I was a science teacher, so if I've been teaching about science labs, I can actually have a student work through a science lab, completely start to finish, you know, and if I see that that's been a great progression, then I've got the flexibility to choose that as a summative. So it's all about student learning.
Mr. Hatler?
Ms. Gershnik, I'm sure you've heard that a few weeks ago, we had a parent, and actually a scholar from, on an assessment from ISU come and share some concern she had about the heavy weighting on our summative scores. Can you talk about what the committee's thinking was?
Sure, sure. Well, and as I said, the high school hasn't changed their weighting, it's been like that for six or seven years. But the idea was that because we practice, practice, practice before we even start the formative grading, then we do the formative grading for a while, then we move to the summative. The idea was, we should be giving plenty of opportunities to prepare for that summative as we go. And then the second piece of that is, because we have the fix-up strategies and the other opportunities to elevate that, they felt that that mitigated the weight of the summative.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the board.
Nice job, thanks. And I say this with the heart of a teacher, having taught in the public schools, and now, I guess they call it teaching in college, I'll let you know. I've got a couple, just a couple observations to help those of us who don't know the vocabulary.
Sure.
Okay, so on your slide, promoted conversations about gathering authentic evidence of what a student is. Can you tell us what authentic evidence is?
Sure, and I can probably give you inauthentic evidence.
Wait, 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 can you show us and do authentic, him being authentic?
Yes, you are, aren't you? We're talking about, instead of over-supporting a student on a worksheet, so to speak, we want to see what that student can do. So there's a difference between over-supporting somebody when they're learning and letting them do it on their own. Another example would be, we always talk about, Mrs. Govine and I talk about, even bonus points being something that's not rigorous, but rather something that's very simple, or, I'm probably not doing a very good job on this part. Pardon me? Yeah, performance, and giving students opportunities and choice for demonstrating their learning more authentically would be some examples.
I think that is so exciting. I think the example, and you can take a physics class, and you can learn physics and take a final on that.
Right.
Or, if you need to take the final, okay, but you build a bridge.
Right.
And then you have to know physics in order to build a bridge, which actually comes me to my next question, because authentic assessment is, it is about projects and what you know, and that's not all it's about, but I mean, that's an emphasis on that.
Application level.
And so, and yet, at the same time, we're doing traditional tests, we're doing midterms and finals. So how are we going to, are we doing a hybrid here, or how's that going to work?
Right, I would say we're in a transition phase with the midterms and the finals. We met in June with high, or I met, we, all of me, met with the high school folks.
That's the royal you.
That's the royalty. And we talked about, first of all, the idea of common assessments as much as possible, so that teacher A is not giving something entirely different than teacher B, but not necessarily the same format, but making sure that the same standards are assessed at the same level. But the other thing we talked about was trying to move our assessments to application level, so that it's not just drill and kill, what can I remember, fill in the blank, it's more, we're trying to prepare our students for the world, right? So, and get out in there with careers and apply their learning. And I've yet been given a fill-in-the-blank page from Dr. Croft for my job.
So we're talking about things like portfolios and projects and...
It can lead to that down the road. We haven't quite gotten all, but that's exactly the idea, yes.
Great, thank you.
You loved that sixes by Fulon, Michael Fulon, and Dr. Bob, the mural, while you were kind of interacting with Mrs. Gershnik, the mural outside, the students from Sterling Giroux.
Sure.
That's authentic, isn't it?
That's a perfect example.
That's where you were heading, yeah.
Yes?
And the thing we like, too, is, as we go along, as teachers get more comfortable with this, they can make those decisions about how to collect those data from students.
And actually, I'll end with this one, because I think this is an opportunity, did I just, yeah, opportunity for teachers. When we work on grading growth mindset, and if I understood you correctly, that's the step beyond simply at putting a letter grade or anything, but if you see, for example, on a written assignment, that you take time to highlight where the student needs to improve, pointing out errors in grammar, forms, spelling, that sort of thing, so that the student doesn't just get a grade, they can see where that grade comes from. Is that where I'm coming from, the growth mindset?
Yes.
And so, and I think that's terrific, and I try to do that all the time. The challenge for our teachers is that that's time-consuming.
It is.
And, which is, that's why I said it's an opportunity to maybe, and this may be some professional development down the road, to train teachers to be a little bit more, or to understand how, if they do this, they don't have to do something else.
Right.
Need it to be efficient, so that it's not just added on top of their day.
Right.
Which, you know how that goes.
Right, and that's where the formative feedback also can be student-to-student, because if students understand their success criteria of what to achieve within that target, we talked about this at our high school meeting.
That's outstanding.
The other day, to give that peer assessment back and forth, and then again, you're moving the learning from the adult doing everything to students engaging in that, understanding and coaching each other. So it's not going to be done overnight, I'm just going to tell everybody out loud, this is going to be a process for us.
I think that's outstanding, good for you.
Thank you.
I just want to ask, have you thought about methods of bringing and communicating to parents what we're doing?
Sure.
Are we, you know...
Sure, beyond the, we did the newsletter, and then I presented to the PTO council. The newsletter went out through Mr. Copeland, as well as through the principals. I definitely think that the parent conferences were really important, too, for the teachers to be able to demonstrate to the parents right there in front of them, you know, what this looked like, and how this will move the grade along. But as we go, we will continue to provide feedback to the parents about, and parents call me, they call members on our committee, so we are constantly taking that information back and forth. And we investigate situations, too, if there's something of concern.
Other comments? Thank you.
Dash Curriculum Update. While Ms. Langhoff is getting ready, we had gotten a few comments and feedback around the Dash curriculum, and for transparency purposes, every time a board member says, "I would like to know a little bit more about this or that," I love to hear that, because then it's a PowerPoint presentation to you. So, thank you, Maureen, and thank you for Becca, for presenting to the board.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Carrot. We did want to provide you with an update. We, it has been a little bit of time since we last presented to the Board of Education regarding our Division of Adolescent Sexual Health curriculum and project. So, as many of you know, we were identified as a priority district by the State Board of Education and Center for Disease Control in 2014, so we've been working with them since 2014, and other districts across the state. The reason we were identified several years ago was due to our high rates of teen births and sexually transmitted infections. So we've been working really hard since then, and we actually, just as recent as this past August, were praised for our efforts, working as a team by the State Board of Education for the work we're doing with our community partners. We've also been contacted by Southern Illinois University, who would like to conduct research with us on the work we're doing and the student outcomes we're having. So they have commended us on our work, which is huge, that's pretty good. So, we've been working really hard with our community partners. So this is Becca Mathis, she's one of our community educators from Holt Center for Healthy Living, so I'm thankful that she's with us tonight. So, just a couple things before we get started. I did give you guys a copy of the brochure that went home to almost 5,000 families this fall before we started school, and a copy of the letter that went home to families. To date, we've received approximately 30 opt-outs from families in our district, and the brochure notes that, in fact, most students are not sexually active. In fact, less than half of all high school students have not had sexual intercourse. In addition, a lot of our students just need more knowledge to make better choices. So, as a part of this entire project, we're just hoping, over time, we do have the opportunity to help our students make better choices, so that we'll start seeing better outcomes in our city. The most recent data, which was provided to us from the Center for Disease Control and Illinois Department of Public Health, as of 2016, we were number one and two in the county, or, excuse me, in the state, PRA was ranked one and two in the state for chlamydia and gonorrhea. Okay, Becca is going to go through a few slides with you.
I have the pleasure of presenting a lot of this data to the students, we are not shy about this fact, we share this in the lessons with the students when it is age-appropriate. So this is a breakout of the chlamydia and gonorrhea cases that are relevant to the student population that we are teaching. It shows that the rates increase as students get older, as the age groups get older, and a lot of times I pose that question to students of, why do you think? And they know exactly why, they know that students are more likely to be sexually active as they get older. But it's also to drive home the point that, as individuals get older, they're going to have to have the skills already and be empowered to make the choices that they need to make in order to protect themselves, if this is the reality. in order to protect themselves, if this is the reality that they are facing. And so those are the rates that are pulled from Peoria County. We also are very upfront about the teen pregnancy rates or teen birth rates, and this data comes from the Heart of Illinois United Way Community Needs Assessment. This is comparing the Peoria region, so that does not mean just necessarily Peoria City, though we do make up a significant portion of that population. And our rates for teen births are much higher than the rest of the state of Illinois, as well as compared to the national average. And all of this statistical information is presented in that brochure, but it's also broken down in a way to explain why sexual health education is so important then, if these are the types of rates that we're facing, if this is the reality of the youth in our community. Another big point to be made is that it's not just physical health that's impacted, but it's also high school success and future success of students when it comes to this type of health. So the Dash project is composed of several different components. It's not just sexual health education. It's more of a three-pronged approach that also includes access to sexual health services as well as a safe and supportive environment for students and staff. So it's kind of this wraparound approach of, we're not just providing the information, we're telling students how to access those services that we are talking about if they're interested, if they need to do so, and do they feel safe and supported to discuss these types of topics, whether that be within school or identifying key adults that they could ask these questions to and learn more information. There's several different community partners that are a part of this initiative. It's not just individuals educating, it's individuals a part of the Public Health Department, Reproductive Health Committee, other educating agencies like the Center for Prevention of Abuse, or Central Illinois Friends, that are helping to advise this and really push this community effort forward. Because like we said, it's not just the education, but it's a three-pronged approach. A big reason that there was a push for this program within Peoria Public Schools is the law that was enacted in January 2014. This essentially allows for a school district to be able to implement comprehensive sexual health education if the district is choosing to do so, which that means abstinence plus contraception. And as a result of that law, the, excuse me, the Flash curriculum, or Family Life and Sexual Health curriculum was selected. It's a curriculum that is supported by the CDC's health education standards, it matches National Sexuality Health Education standards, it was also approved by the Illinois Board of State, or Illinois State Board of Education, excuse me. And a really big reason it was chosen by our community is because it does have that comprehensive approach. Now, a lot of times when people hear comprehensive, they think that just means abstinence plus birth control, but if you notice, a lot of these topics also include more of the social emotional aspects of sexual health as well, in terms of how do you communicate with a partner about getting tested, or condom negotiation skills, or how do you learn what is healthy and unhealthy in a relationship? There's very, very many layers to the topic of sexual health, and this curriculum helps us touch on many different aspects when it comes to comprehensive. So the next sequence of slides are just some typically asked questions that we get concerning this project, one of which being, why this curriculum, or where is it from, is it science-based, things like that. The Flash curriculum itself comes from Seattle King County in Washington, and it was created by their Public Health Department. It is science-based, it's considered a promising program, it does take a good amount of years for a program to be evidence-based, it involves a lot of research, and it also is particular to a population. One reason that this program is so promising though is because it has been successfully adapted in many different communities, which is a large reason why we chose this curriculum. It's also based on the theory of planned behavior, which is a widely-used theory when it comes to health promotion and health prevention in several different aspects, not just sexual health. It includes strong family involvement, because a lot of these conversations are not just going to end in the classroom, so we are always encouraging students, you know, find that adult you're comfortable talking to, make sure, identify somebody that you would be willing to ask questions to. And another thing is that it supports and respects diverse community values, that a part of the Flash training, there is a protocol to appropriately answering questions, because inevitably, there's going to be some value-based questions that come out of these lessons. And so anyone who's implementing the program, who's capable of talking about it, should be able to navigate that protocol to understand diverse and just very different student population perspectives, whether that's in the classroom or the family values that may lie outside of the classroom as well. I did briefly mention this, but we're often asked, well, what standards are used, or kind of what is this curriculum based on? There are National Sexuality Education standards that this curriculum is based on, as, as well as health education standards that this curriculum matches along with. And these standards pretty much mean that the content that's being delivered, you know, rather what the age is appropriate for that age, appropriate for students' growth and development. These standards actually span K through 12. Those other, there's other schools, there's other students across the country that receive sexual health education at a much younger age, but these standards do kind of flow through, building upon concepts year after year, which is something that we've been able to do within our school district. We start sexual health education in fifth grade with strictly puberty education, and it continues year after year, building upon similar concepts through freshman year of high school, and we are hoping to expand that education further for older grades in high school as well. If anyone was interested in researching these standards or learning more about them, they're completely free to download online. Who is teaching the lessons? I have the pleasure of being one of the individuals that goes into the schools and teaches the sexual health education curriculum, all different kinds of ages. The Holt Center provides a bulk of that education. The Center for Prevention of Abuse is also another agency that is on board right from the get-go. They implement their Aaron's Law education, like they have always done, for our school district, and they also take on some of the additional sexual violence prevention education pieces, especially in seventh grade, with things like coercion and consent, online safety, things like that. Central Illinois Friends is another new community partner this year that we're fortunate to have on board. They teach a lesson about testing for HIV and STIs in eighth grade, so having that core content knowledge.
We did train sixth grade representatives from each school this past May and August, and then again, we trained in the past SIP, we trained high school PE and health teachers so that they could have knowledge and be able to teach the curriculum. So we are slowly making sure our staff members can train and be able to teach the curriculum also. That, the, it's, it's just very critical that you have staff members in place who are highly trained and able to teach the, the curriculum to students. They have to be skilled and able to deliver the curriculum in a way that students understand it, can ask questions, but it's also, as we know, when you're building relationships with students, you have to have, you know, staff members in place that can answer questions and that staff members have that relationship with students that they trust. So, we, you know, both pieces are critical.
Yeah, and that would be the ultimate goal, to build more capacity within the school district, and like Maureen said, finding those key individuals who are not only willing but also passionate, and willing to develop those kinds of relationships, and have a comfortability teaching this topic, because it's not necessarily easy, especially when it comes to navigating those more difficult spaces of open questions as well. Another question we're frequently asked is, why do you talk about gender and LGBT specifically? Why is that something that's a part of the curriculum? First and foremost, if somebody looks at the National Sexuality Education standards, it's something that's a part of curriculum regardless of what curriculum is selected, if it's comprehensive, it's going to include these conversations. And we also know that inclusivity means healthy in general, that this is a student population that also needs to receive this type of education, and it's also a student population that is disproportionately affected by negative sexual health outcomes, which I'll detail that a little bit more in a second. These conversations though, being able to identify, what do these words mean, how do they relate to one another, how are they separate from one another? It's an opportunity for students to navigate these conversations respectfully with one another, and also learn how to treat each other with dignity, and recognizing that there are differences amongst us, and that's okay to be different, approaching those questions with that Flash value protocol. And then above all else, recognizing that Peoria Public Schools values including each student to be successful, and empowering each student with this information regardless of their background or their particular beliefs and whatnot. I did want to emphasize some of the health disparities of this particular group of students. There are more specific numbers available if somebody wanted to research more from Healthy People 2020 or Centers for Disease Control. There's a lot of information out there, but I just picked out a couple different ones. Students who are LGBTQ+, students who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, are much more likely to attempt suicide, are significantly more likely to be homeless, are at a higher risk for HIV and STIs, and teen pregnancy, especially individuals who are lesbian students. We would not often assume that those students were at a high risk for pregnancy, but they're significantly higher risk for pregnancy than their heterosexual female students. They're more likely to smoke tobacco, higher rates of victimization within the school and outside of the school. And one of the biggest things is that they face additional barriers when it comes to accessing healthcare, so not just sexual health services, but healthcare in general, because of a lack of support, feelings of isolation, and kind of an overall fewer family supports or those intimate points of contact where other students may feel comfortable asking questions, these students in particular do not. One final question you get is, well, what if parents are concerned, or if somebody has questions, how does the logistics of all of this work out about how it's communicated? Maureen did share with you the parent letters that are distributed at the beginning of the school year before curriculum is implemented. Along with that parent letter this year, we did include that brochure to try and convey a little bit more of that information in a manner that would be helpful to parents in understanding why we are implementing what we are. Guardians have the right to opt their child out, it's a part of the law, that's an option that's available. The curriculum is available online. All of these materials said thus far are available in English as well as Spanish, so that was a, a new change this year, we're proud of that improvement. Materials can be requested to be reviewed. If somebody does not have internet access, they can contact their administration at the school and view those materials. And did you want to say something?
We also added a quick link on the right side of our homepage on the district website so that the materials and curriculum would be more easily accessible by families or staff members who want to view the curriculum and information, or the opt-out form.
Was that a letter mailed to parents?
Yes, this letter was mailed, we mailed almost 5,000.
That's what I thought.
Letters with the, with the brochure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do want to say, the reason the curriculum is online is because we want this to be transparent. We also want this to be a conversation that parents and guardians have with their students as well. So if they can see what's being discussed in the classroom, they also have the opportunity to prompt with further understanding or more questions. And we are more than happy to answer questions or help parents or guardians navigate those conversations, and the district handles specific concerns with the inside of the particular agencies, that if somebody contacts the district about a particular lesson that an agency teaches from the Flash curriculum, then we, we'll work as a team as kind of the collaborative effort that we have to make sure we provide that information as best we can.
We've also spoken at a couple of the parent university events. We're open to presenting it more, we're open to presenting at PTO events or PTO meetings in smaller groups, or it's been mentioned, you know, we should be in community organizations more, or in churches, just to get the word out regarding the statistics and the data in the community. So we're absolutely open to that.
Really, the final note is not just here to give information, but also hopefully to disseminate information. How anybody in the room could help would be by being a community advocate of this type of education with the information that you have been given and understand, and growing more informed as to why complete comprehensive sexual health education is so important, and that's really ultimately going to make the difference for our community when it comes to this particular health crisis. So, yeah. Any questions?
Questions from anyone? May I ask, did I miss what the acronym DASH means?
Division of Adolescent Sexual Health.
Okay, I didn't know if it was.
So when the project originally started, it's, the Illinois State Board of Education Dash Project.
I knew what it was, but I didn't think. Comments from anyone? Thanks.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Selena.
I just wanted to thank you two, especially Becca and like the people at Friends, because I know that at Peoria High, we've done a lot of work with them. Like as soon as the statistics like were let out, we, our pride team like had a meeting with Becca, and she asked us what we could do to help. And I think that it's very important to, with statistics like this, to go straight to the students.
Yes.
And they did, and I think that's very important, and they've worked with us with the Get Yourself Tested event at Peoria High, and just a bunch of stuff like that. So yeah, I just wanted to thank you two. I think I have before, but I don't.
Thank you, though. You guys did all the work.
Thank you so much.
The students have been awesome. And actually, I'm meeting at May Annual tomorrow with the youth advisory team there. We're planning the Get Yourself Tested event at May Annual, which is November 30th, and then we're planning one for Richards in the spring. So the students have been just awesome advocates, and, and really, the students have the answers in terms of helping to make their communities healthier. So thank you.
Well, thank you for giving us the information.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Walder?
Yeah, I appreciate the work you've done with this. I did have a couple of questions for you though. One of the things that you stated was that in the presentations, that they had to be medically accurate and value-based. And the other thing that I felt was kind of important, we've had some concerns from some parents about some particular issues that you've had. If you have those concerns, and is there a way to redress those, you said if there's a particular item or presentation you're making, that, is that one that can be reviewable? For you to get, like you said, I think, get back together and, and see if that can be addressed maybe in a different way?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we, as, there's kind of different approaches that we take, and first and foremost, it's the district perspective of, you know, what do we need to do on our end with our staff gaining more information? And then from the educator perspective, it's looking at that particular curriculum and working with the educator, so the person who is in the room providing the curriculum, and just going through, how is this presented? How is this piece explained? Were you asked any particular questions that day that maybe were outside of the scope of the lesson? Because we can only provide so much information with the curriculum itself online. There are going to be some questions that may be prompted in a classroom that we, we technically can't record going to happen. So we do have a process where the educators kind of review as a team, and then improving responses, improving our process always.
Okay.
Thank you for that question.
Other questions are coming? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Karat, School Building Capacity and Enrollment Trends.
Thank you, President Ross. This is one of these presentations, it will actually be very quick. It's one of those where the board members, I wish I had, and I said, "Not a problem, we'll share a slide with you and give you some feedback." And it just so happened, Chris, if you can help me, actually, board members, you have a copy of, of, of the presentation in your, in your folders, you, I think you got it on Thursday. But the building capacity data that you have, and the student enrollment data, is actually the last step of our work in providing the needed information to, remember that company, the Davis Demographics Company, that's working on the district's demographic study for us. So at some point, they're going to need this data, and with this data we're reviewing tonight, they're, actually, they have it, and they're doing something that's called their, their geocoding, the data. And I, I'm learning that they're taking addresses and making locations out of it. It's really like, think of a map and putting pins on it. I know, Mr. Shaw, that's your area, right? So they'll use that information to see trends of student movement, building usage and capacity information over time, and then they align that data with census information and other projects within Peoria. And we'll just kind of take a look at the impact on our future enrollment. So it's all sort of tied in, and, and so we're letting the Davis Demographics software do its work. So over the next month, also a Transportation efficiencies committee, they will work closely with the demographers to review the results, and they will look at options for efficiencies within our district and come up with potential plans to share with you. And I anticipate that you'll receive some really solid information by the end of this calendar year. So let's just take a look, and I, unfortunately, I did not bring my information with me, and I actually can't see. Let's see. So the good thing is though, and Nick, you can jump in, so I think a big question I had was capacity, and, right, the school capacity is the number of students that can be reasonably housed in that school and in that classroom. And then Mr. Willis and his team and Dave, they met with Davis Group, was it, the architects, actually, was that last week?
It was.
I know, it's, we're so busy and everything is running into each other, and you physically and literally went building after building after building, classroom after classroom, and you counted classrooms, and you want to tell us a little bit more about that? And I, I thought you would, as a board, you would like to know how capacity is defined, and there's a definition for you. Go ahead, Mr. Willis.
We had teams go into each of the schools. We counted classrooms for... We counted classrooms for the purpose of developing building capacities as we went through those, each of those buildings. Some of the spaces, as we all know, accommodate a number of students, gymnasiums, cafeterias, libraries, you know, principals' offices, all those kinds of things. And so we excluded those spaces and really focused on the instructional spaces and those regular, what I would call regular-sized classrooms. We counted, sometimes you would run into a smaller classroom and we counted those. And then basically just did the math, larger classrooms, we multiplied times the standard of 25 students, smaller classrooms, we multiplied times 10 to get the capacity for a particular school. One of the results of this kind of process is you could have a school that is, let's say, 70 or 75% full and all of the classrooms are being utilized. And we are aware of that. When you're talking about 70 or 75% full, most likely what you're talking about is you might have 20 or 21 kids in a class and you might be able to get four or five or six more students in that class. And so every classroom is being utilized, but you might be able to get four or five more kids. And if you take that times, you know, 25 kids times 20 classrooms is 100 students. So most times when we say that a building has capacity, typically, what's most common is that you can usually accommodate more students in a classroom if you're talking about utilizing that building to its, you know, to its fullest capacity. And that essentially was our process.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Willis. And the purpose of this is just to really provide you with data. You can see the information is broken up by total district enrollment and then primary school buildings, K through four, and then middle school buildings, capacity and enrollment information. And there is a trend. I wanted, I said, let's just monitor, let's take a look at it, take a peek over three years. And there's high school information and some buildings. We have a few configurations. We have 712, Manuel is 712. We have a couple of K-8 buildings, K-6 buildings, there's Valeska, some special services buildings. So you can kind of take a look at it and see, for example, you can take a look at Chatteroaks. The capacity is 485 students. And if you look at the three-year trend, you'll see where they are. You can take a look at Franklin's, Heinz, TJ. Remember, we had the pods and we actually, TJ used to be 2015, a K-6 building. And so that explains that one. You can see Keller's, North Moore's. So a couple of you were interested in one or two schools. And I said, well, let's just take a peek at everything and thus the information for you today. Middle schools, you can look at Mark Bill's, Calvin Coolidge. So I think it's good information to have and I'm happy that the Davis Company will be using that information to continue to, to provide some analysis for us. We have Peoria High, we have Richwoods, we have Manul's. Then there's Glen Oaks. A huge conversation around Glen Oaks. If you look at Glen Oaks' capacity, it's 975 students. And in 2015, in November, we had 864 students. 2016, November, same time, 766. And currently this month, their enrollment is 882. You can look at Glen Oaks' information, Roosevelt's information, and so forth. I know Valeska's, it shows they have a capacity of 400 and they are at 423. There are a couple of classrooms, Dr. Wilson, how many, two or three classrooms? Are there two classrooms at a PM, half?
Right. It reflects.
So that reflects that. So they're not, oh, it's just, it's half.
The 400-plus-
There you go.
...students at Valeska Hinton don't all attend at the same time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
There you go. Nice work put in it. See? Not smart people working for me. And smart teachers, too. So, yeah, board, are there any questions about that? So it was mere information for you. A couple of people said, hey, I wish I had this and I wish I had that. And I said, well, let's do it for everybody and take a look at it.
I have a question, given this data. Now, you said this data would be going to, as part of the study that we're doing, the-
Residential trends?
Residential trends.
Yes, ma'am.
But we're also looking at boundaries, right?
That's all part of it.
Uh-huh. So my question here is, looking at some of these numbers and capacities, will the future require us to look at how many schools we need to have open?
We have, I would recommend that we wait and get a comprehensive-
But not now, because we're not sure of the future.
Yeah, comprehensive. And then we'll make a recommendation to the board.
Okay. Other questions?
I know Ms., I know Ms. Pam was asking that question, Ms. Ross.
Oh, she was.
I read it in the paper, I read it in the paper today.
Dr. Rodd, will the board be able to access this demographic data or is it something that we can request specific reports on?
Absolutely. Anything you'd like, Mr. Shaw, just send an email and we'll make sure you get that. You wanted that electronically? Is that what you were thinking or something specific?
If we have access to it, then I can just go in and find out what I want to find out. But if not, if we don't have access to it or we can't have access to it, then I'll just request a specific report.
Which one are you referring to? That one or when the?
I really would like to look at just a map of the city with the schools laid out and see what the population is, what the enrollments are, something that you can just look at the entire.
I anticipate that will be part of that final product when everything is said and done by December, Chris? Yeah.
The presentation will be interactive, so if there's anything from the board that you want to see something else changed, we'll be able to do that.
Should be fun, I hope.
I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Jackson, hand her as I can-
I think it really would be important to see a map of the city, like he's asking, and where those schools are with the capacity and what's in it. So I'm looking at this and I see Mark Bill's has a capacity of 460 and they only have 216 students in there.
Right.
But if we could see it from a-
We will. That's the geocoding, that's the geocoding thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
So they're still doing the due diligence.
And I'm certainly not talking about closing schools. So we'll just, I just want to see where our kids are.
Sure.
And the number of kids in those schools. Since we are getting comments about overcrowding, then I think we ought to be concerned with, you know, what's happening in our schools, is it a good academic learning environment and all those things that go with it? So, thank you. I'd like to see that.
You're welcome. Actually, Ms. Jackson, you were the one who asked for this. And in time, we will get there. It's a process. And that's part of, that's part of it, identifying the capacity and the enrollment. And then they'll feed it into their software and work with transportation also and we'll be back again.
Dr. Bob?
Thank you, Mrs. Ross. And I'd like to actually follow up on Ms. Jackson's comments. When, what assumptions are made at the outset with this project?
Actually, for me, I have not made any assumptions. All I was asked was capacity and enrollment information. So that's, that's what I'm presenting today. I'm just presenting the facts as they are right now. That's the purpose of this. It's just to show, that's what I was requested. I was asked, can I see the capacity of this building and that building and also the enrollment? So I added the trends to it and then I said, we'll do everything. So maybe in December, Dr. Bob, everybody, I think, are heading for that presentation in December and they're still working on it. I haven't seen the project yet. I haven't seen the results.
Dr. Bob, I had gotten calls regarding Glen Oaks and the capacity, the overcapacity and that kind of thing. And so I thought, let's not just look at Glen Oaks. I'd like to see all the schools. So that's, that's how it really started. So I just, you know, we see the schools and we see what's happened, but we don't know, you know, is a school, is a building big enough? Is it too small? I mean, so there's a lot of other things that'll be asked as we look at the capacity. But it started out with me saying, okay, I'm getting calls and stuff about Glen Oaks, let's look at all the schools. And that's how I-
Thanks.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community to address the board with your comments and suggestions. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to assist you and help you with that. In addition, board members are accessible by phone and emails. Our emails are listed at website, PSD150.org. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person will be given five minutes to speak. As a reminder, no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is, Ms. Sharon Cruz.
After the debacle in Charlottesville, I set out to assure myself that no Peoria school would have been named after Robert E. Lee. The search for that one piece of information led me to a study of the people for whom our schools were named. Then I learned that some of you had similar interests. Lee School, built in 1889, was named for John Lee, a Peoria lawyer who was also a state representative and a state senator. Tonight, I want to share a bit of very early history of African-Americans in Peoria Public Schools. The generally accepted founding date for Peoria Public Schools is February 1855. The first Board of School Inspectors was elected February 15, 1856. Before 1860, there had been a separate school for colored children in Peoria. By 1863, the teacher of that school was on the public school payroll and the building was supported by the public system. Amazingly, integration came in September 1872. Nine citizens of color, including J. Rogers, Thomas, and Thomas Lindsay, petitioned the Board of School Inspectors requesting that their children be admitted to the district school. Board minutes show that Lucy B. Ting's husband moved that the petition be received and that the request of the petitioners be granted. His straightforward motion carried by a vote of seven to three. Two months later, the board discussed creating a night school so that 20 pupils over 12 years of age could work during the day and go to school at night. My data does not state whether or not that happened. Amazingly enough, the very day that I read this information online, Karen Atkins-Dutrow was inspecting my newly renovated basement and she discovered a book left by my house's former owners. The History of Peoria, published by the Peoria Journal, contains a picture of Julia, the daughter of Sophia, Sophia and Thomas Lindsay, the man who had petitioned and won the right for his daughter Julia to be admitted to Peoria Public Schools. Julia Lindsay married Henry C. Gibson, who was Peoria's first elected black official, serving as city constable for two terms beginning in 1898. He was commissioned as Notary Public by Illinois' governor in 1892. In 1904, Gibson brought suit against the Main Street Theater for refusing his right to sit on the lower floor and ordering him to the balcony. Gibson won and was awarded $25 in damages. Julia Lindsay Gibson was listed in the Peoria City Directory as a sherupodist and manicurist in the firm of Gibson &amp; South at 620 Main Street. Gibson and Lindsay are two more names to consider in changing school names. Remember, most, if not all, schools north of Forest Hill were named before they were annexed into Peoria. I have given you four pages of a hodgepodge of information about Peoria Public School Buildings, their origins and namesakes, with many spaces left blank. I found it very interesting, thought maybe you would, some of you probably already know this history, don't you? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terry Knapp, after he finishes. Responses after he finishes.
I attended the Veterans Day Parade the other day and I think credit where credit is due, when I went to the Labor Day Parade, I told you that Manuel marched in the Labor Day Parade, which I'm proud that they marched, but they had eight drums. As you see here on your personnel report, 11:14, tonight, you're hiring a band director at Manuel. You know, you had a band director that lasted one day, three months ago, and you're finally hiring a band director at Manuel. Bravo to you. But I would say that Manuel did himself proud the other day in the parade. They had their band march in uniforms, black and orange, their high hats on, instruments playing, drums drumming, and they did a great job. They were there with their ROTC contingent from the Army. They were there with the Roosevelt Band, who did themselves proud as well. I was missing the Fine Arts High School and I think the other two ROTC groups. And I think we should make an effort that we have the ROTC groups at the Veterans Parade. You know, so much is being said about veterans today and kneeling at football games and this and that, the other things. Our veterans really appreciated the fact that the Manuel contingent was there. Manuel did themselves proud, as I said again. I'd like to go on and talk a little bit about the year-round school study that's going to be coming up. I have an article here that Ms. Cruz discovered, written by Art Andrews in 1962. 1962 was a banner year for Woodruff High School. They added addition on toward the football field, if you recall, Mr. Walter, we were addressing at the stadium and so forth. The 1962 adjunct to Woodruff was a result of Sputnik, Sputnik being the Russian satellite. The Science Foundation came out with tons of funds and according to this article, we enlisted those funds and had a banner, Banner School District. As a part of that Banner School District in 1962, we added summer school. Novelty, summer school. About 15 years ago, the summer school was dismantled. This was the feature, feature part of District 150. One-third of the students, according to this article by Mr. Andrews, participated in summer school, participated in summer school, two months of summer school, nine months of school, two months of summer school, not some year-on- two months of summer school, not some year-round funky benign thing that was three, three weeks off here, three weeks off there, three weeks off here. A full nine months of summer school, which our students in this city need. They need it for enrichment, they need it for remedial work. We don't need three, three weeks off, three weeks off here, three weeks off there. We need to go back to this 1962 model that lasted for 40 years, that did students well. I called two compliance officers from universities today, one was at Bradley, and they said that the NCAA still accepts students who go back and repeat a class. If I'm a student at Manuel or Central or Richwoods and I get a D in a class, I can go back to summer school or I can go to night school, which we used to have over Washington, the old Washington School on West Moss, and I can repeat a class and bring that grade up and the NCAA will recognize that. They do not recognize the old credit recovery thing we were throwing out there to people like it's some, some good thing. It's not. The NCAA doesn't recognize it. Nobody in the free world recognizes credit recovery but us for graduation. Put a kid on a computer, let him punch a few keys and graduate. That's good for graduation rates, but that's not good for the NCAA. It's not good for colleges receiving those, those courses and recognizing those for students. I told you, I had a basketball player that repeated three courses, till I even got him in Purdue. 12 years in the pro league in Argentina, is now a teacher and coach out in Washington, DC. He would never have gone anywhere or done anything if it had not been for summer school and night school in this city. I had a student from Manuel who was sitting in my class, got all F's at Manuel, came to Woodruff, got up 5:30 in the morning, rode a bus, transferred another bus to Woodruff, and she was getting straight A's. And I had her come before the principal and the counselor. I told you the story once before and she sat there and cried. She said, when I was at Manuel, excuse me, have a good day, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Hedy Elliott.
Hedy Elliott Gardner, 3811 West Page Wood. It's about two hours past my bedtime, but I find this important. Coming off of Veterans Day weekend, I, before I start talking about what I'm really here to talk about, I, I just want to say I'm really excited and see a lot of enthusiasm throughout the schools, whether it be Peoria Public Schools or throughout the community and the nation. And a lot of people are embracing the veterans and the kids who are becoming involved and that, I have to say, that really warms my heart. I know Doug Shaw's a veteran, Chetay Green is a veteran. I want to thank all of the veterans who are in the audience and Mr. Sierra, one of my favorite veterans. And I want to know, is there a stance in one way or another? Do we say the pledge? Is that a district-wide thing? Is it up to building, to building? I just am curious about that. I'm also curious about the flags in the classroom. Back in the day, first day of school, first week of school, the custodians would come around and make sure everybody had a flag. And I haven't seen that lately in the school. So I'm, I'm just curious about that and I would hope you'd do a better job if we're not there already. I'm really here tonight to express my concern over the sex ed curriculum. In full disclosure, I'm a Peoria Public Schools parent, I have a 12th grader at Richwoods, and I have a 7th grader at Holy Family. My husband and I chose to raise our kids Catholic, and I don't apologize for that and that's not against public school, but we wanted our kids to have a religious upbringing. And my, my oldest daughter, when she was in 8th grade, we said, you can choose where you want to go, Richwoods, Notre Dame, Peoria Christian. She chose Richwoods and I've been very happy with Richwoods. But the direction that the district takes on the sex ed curriculum will steer my, my youngest daughter either in, give her an option or not an option. So I'm here as a staff member and as a parent. My personal feeling is that I think the district has not done a good job informing parents of the changes and of the topics. I've talked to a number of parents and in particular inner-city parents who have no idea that this is going on. So I think we need to do a little bit better job on informing the public of what their children are being exposed to. I consider myself to be very well-informed and very in tune with, with what goes on in the city and in the school district, and I was not aware. So I find it reasonable to think that many parents have no idea that certain things are being implemented. I did send out an email to the board and to many staff members and I suggested an opt-in rather than opt-out. When a parent goes to register, I would, as a parent, I would like to see each topic being discussed and let me choose as a parent or let my students' parents choose what they want their kids to hear. Just personally, I found some of the topics a little too explicit. I would not allow my own child to listen to some of the topics and that's my personal belief and I, I don't begrudge anybody who thinks differently. I mean, but my personal belief is I would not allow my own daughter to have a presentation on how to put on a female condom and I'm just, my husband and I are, don't agree with I, I would like my parents, my, my students, who I believe my students and their parents value what I think, and I think that's why I rarely have any, any issues with students and parents because they do value what I think. And I feel like I'm kind of being dishonest when I'm exposing them to things that I don't think they know about. So that makes me a little bit uncomfortable, more than just a little bit very uncomfortable. Another concern is one of the presentations was not scientifically based. There was opinions. If, I would respectfully request to be allowed to finish.
Board members.
Thank you very much. There was another presentation that I felt was not scientifically based. There was a lot of opinion and for my, I feel great, I think as an educator, my mission is to, to have young people be independent thinkers. And I do not put my political views, my religious views, anything onto my students. And I don't want anyone else to do that. I want my students to be presented with facts, become independent thinkers and make choices for themselves. And in certain presentations, I think it was ideology was pushed on the kids and kids don't know any better. They, they, they think an adult is telling them that it should be true. And I, I think if we're presenting, we should present with science and fact and that's it. And let kids make decisions from there for their future. In the same presentation, surgery and hormone treatment was discussed and I find that highly inappropriate. I would not encourage kids to have surgery, to change something about themselves that they didn't like, and I certainly wouldn't encourage kids to take drugs to change something they didn't like. And I don't care what that is, if it's breast implants or whatever. I think it was highly inappropriate and I would not want my own child exposed. And when I talk about my own child, everybody here who knows me knows that I feel that same way about my own students in my classroom. My last concern is as a staff member, do I have to or does a staff member have to supervise during presentations that go against their religious beliefs? I mean, that's just a question and, and I would like a real answer to that. I appreciate the feedback and discussion. I appreciate the superintendent acknowledging my email. I talked to a couple of board members and I know another one I left a message for and tried to get through and I appreciate the, the attempt to discuss this. And I, my hope is to have a sex ed curriculum that will be factual, informative and comfortable for everybody involved. And I think if you allow parents and the community to be well-informed of what's being presented, that we can have the outcome that we could all agree on. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any response? Ms. Jackson had a response to audience presentation.
Yes, I would. Mrs. Cruz, Mrs. Cruz had mentioned regarding the schools, the naming of schools. Gibson and Lindsay were not the names that I came up with, but both of those are my husband's great-grandparents. So I would not put their name forth. I was, I'm going to stick with what I got. But Henry Gibson and Julia Lindsay married and they are Don's great-grandparents. So I know a lot about the family and what they've done in this community. The first thing I learned about was a $25 discrimination lawsuit that Henry Gibson did and got, that was at the Palace Theater, it was a different name then. So he won $25. So he could sit on the floor. And when I was, came to Peoria, we couldn't sit on the floor, we'd sit in the balcony and the better seats were in the balcony, so I didn't want to sit on the floor. But, but those names didn't come to my mind because I had two other people that I was thinking about and, and there are people I've known since I was, one of them since I was six years old coming into Peoria. So I want you, I want to be very clear that I know who those people are and they're part of my family and so I'll stick with what I got here with, as we talk about this and decide to talk about changing a name of a school. So we'll, we'll decide what, where we go from there. And yes, Hedy, we, I sent you an email, said, let's talk and we need to do that. So I want to make sure I understand clearly what the parents are thinking and saying and I know there are some things that I was concerned about and I don't want to sound like a prude or anything like that, but then sometimes, you know, we have to deal with certain things as they come up. So let's talk.
Okay. Dr. Karat, do you have any response?
Yeah. Wanted to thank Ms. Cruz for the, the information. I found it to be, find it to be meaningful, very helpful. So thank you. And Mr. Knapp, we're always, thank you always for your feedback. No matter what, whether it's perceived as good or bad or indifferent, there's reflection going on, so thank you, sir. And Ms., Ms. Elliott, Ms. Elliott Garner, Ms. Hedy, she knows that she is, I'm trying to find the right word, but one of our VIPs, and everybody's a VIP in my book, but an individual I can call on and if, if there's a student that nobody else will, can handle out, say, Ms. Elliott, can you, this parent is calling me every day, can you? And she always, yeah, I mean, your relationship with your kids are amazing and, I mean, you have a special knack with, with the ones that are, you know, are most difficult, right? So I always appreciate that. And we actually really appreciated your feedback, the questions that you had. The team and I talked about it over time. I know Maureen, we have, you know, we've had some questions like the one, for example, am I, if this is not, you know, a value, the value that I espouse and I, am I obligated to sort of sit in and kind of feel the pain and endure? And one of the things I would say is work with the administrator. I mean, if you were one of my teachers and I was either at Manuel or Roosevelt, we'd work something out. So that's one of the, one of the recommendations and AIOs, that's what I would recommend, we, you know, if it comes up. Then the other thing is over 5,000 letters were, were sent to families and some people are getting it. And remember, not everybody will receive it because it's, you know, it's just certain grades. So Romy would not have gotten it because she's a senior. And we've had 30 parents opt-out. Are there room for improvements? Yep, for sure. And that's where Becca mentioned and Maureen mentioned that, you know, they're interested in, in getting feedback and making adjustments and I'm definitely in favor of that. I mean, some of the examples that you gave. And I, you know, it's, it's, it's such a totally different society than when, you know, when we were little kids. You, you listened to the music, you, I was, I was a primary principal and some of the things that even the kindergartners and they were imitating and replicating, you know what I mean? So things have changed and, I mean, unfortunately, we have to teach sexual health. Number one, as we said, it's mandated, but yeah, there's definitely room for improvement. And Becca, right, and where's Maureen, is Maureen still with us? Mo, we're willing to, and what other questions? We, we went through all of those questions. I didn't write them down, but that one in terms of IU stuck in that classroom, I think that one's really stood out to me. All of the other ones, and I would say just work with an administrator and, and get someone to fill in for you, that sort of thing, if, if need be. But the other, the other pieces can be, definitely can be modified and, and then the opt-in, it's just too much of, we just don't have the staff for the opt-in piece. And for everything else, we, you know, we, we've always used the opt-out for photography and all of those other pieces. So the opt, the opt, the opt-out, it's much more cost-efficient for us as a district. We don't have the manpower, but we've gotten some feedback and we've made the curriculum a little bit more, it's a little bit more easier to find, it's not embedded in that website. So that was some of the feedback we got from you and a couple of other people. So yeah, we're definitely open for recommendations and to improve. So thank you and just continue to work with Becca and Mo and if you need me, pull me in also. Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to, a couple of comments. Mrs. Cruz, thank you so much for this. I'm a history buff and this, this will help us. We've talked about setting up a policy for doing this, this really does help. Mr. Knapp, thank you for the issue on compliance, I was not aware of that. Hedy, I got two things. One, I think you heard that we're going to take a look at some of this, but I appreciate you making the statement that you did. I think I was like the superintendent searching for an adjective. You're so well-respected in this district for the job you do as a teacher and so I knew it wasn't a frivolous complaint when you were coming here, so I appreciate you taking the time. The other question I don't have the answer to was on the pledge and the flags in the classroom. I've been recently substitute teaching and I have a newfound admiration for our teachers. Trust me, they work very hard. And although I'm not subbing in this district, I think it might not be a bad policy for all board members to substitute at least one day a year so that they regain that touch with students. Because I'm a tired old camper for giving.
Yeah, that's a good item. And you know what? AIOs, we can help too, because we're not as a principal, no, in terms of the flags. It's just a matter of requesting. I remember as a principal, my teachers would ask and we would make sure we provided a supply for them, so it's just a matter of folks asking for those. It should be in every classroom.
The schools that I'm in, we do the pledge to the flag every morning, so, and I hope we do that here too. So I couldn't give you the direct answer, so that's what I got. Thank you.
We had the minutes passed.
You're opting out?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson's opting out of the school board member going to the classroom.
Okay. All right. Could I have a motion for approval of the minutes from October 23?
Second.
Dr. Davidson, Avila's?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried. Under information items, proposed expenditures over $2,500. Are there any questions for Mr. Willis on this item? Okay, I believe we don't have the next one. We're going to take off the report.
I will bring it to the next board.
Acts and items, consent agenda, Mr. Adler.
The consent agenda consists of eight items tonight. Item number one is gifts to the school district this meeting totaling $3,988. Year-to-date, $47,121.07. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is a payment for travel. Item number four is the human resources report. Item number five is the field trip approval for Washington gifted 7th and 8th grade class trip to St. Louis Zoo. Item six is the agreement approval for Johnny Wright Career Counseling Services at Knoxville Center. Item number seven is an approval, approval of memorandum of understanding with the Tri-County Urban League for tutoring services, staff on loan. And item number eight is the property tax levy, an estimate of the revenues needed that the Board of Education certify the estimate of revenues as a special tax for educational purposes, operations and maintenance, transportation, working cash, municipal retirement, social security, fire prevention, safety, energy conservation, disability accessibility, social security, or school security and specified repair purposes, tort immunity, special education, leasing of educational facilities or computer technology, bonds and interests and PBC lease in the total of $74,413,782. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Are there any items on the consent agenda any board member would like to pull for a separate vote? May I have a motion and a second?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second. Is there any discussion on any item? I think now would you call the roll, please? Yes. Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried. Expulsions?
I move that we accept the expansion, suspension review listed on the date, on the report dated November 13th, 2017, as presented.
Second. Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
I move that we accept the expulsions listed on the report dated November 13th, 2017, as amended.
Second. Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried. Expulsions with the expulsions to be held in abeyance.
I move that we accept the expulsions with the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated November 13th, 2017, as amended.
Second. Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried. Any presentations and suggestions by board members? Dr. Baum.
Not a presentation or suggestion, but a word of thanks. And I saw Mrs. Zolkowski, Principal of Manuel Academy here earlier, and I would like to offer my thanks and gratitude towards her, her staff, her counseling staff and to PRA Public Schools for once again being hosts to a class from Bradley University, which I teach, which included students from out of state. They're from our online program. They're doing a residency here as they were required to do a couple of times when they're with us. And Mrs. Zolkowski very graciously agreed to host us. And for that, I'm very appreciative.
Thank you. Any other presentations? Mr. Walter, or Mr. Adler?
President Ross and I had the opportunity, pleasure, to spend a day and a half or so with Dr. Karat and some members of her team, Dr. Gajaku, Mr. Booth, as well as a couple of union representatives from PRA Federation of Teachers and kind of delve into some very specific applications of social emotional learning at other districts in the kind of Illinois region. And I thought the bonding there was very good, as well as kind of one of our last sessions was on what they termed deep learning or examples in my, in my take is examples of teachers kind of breaking the typical mold of, of a, maybe a black and white picture of a classroom and collaborating across different age groups, different settings where, like in the instant they showed you the video, you knew exactly how engaged those kids were. I mean, it was just like night and day. And our teachers do a great job and, and we recognize a number of them here tonight, but even one classroom that we can flip the switch for kids like that, we would be doing a, a mountain of difference for our, our kids in our schools. So I would just encourage us to keep that conversation going.
We are, sitting around with a team. Thank you. That was great. Do you remember the sixties? Was it sixties?
Sounds like a summative assessment. I'm just a feeble board member with not a very good memory.
Well, you'll have to, you'll have to go sub. Okay. Any other reports from board committees? Any committees, committees coming up? Mr. Adler, Mr. Shaw, you had your hand up first.
Yes, the Policy Committee meeting has been moved from this Wednesday to next Tuesday, the 21st at 9:30 a.m.
Building Committee will be meeting on November 30th. We moved because of Thanksgiving, so nine o'clock.
All right. The other?
The Parent Teacher Advisory Committee moved from last Thursday to maybe the second week in December. We're searching calendars, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the business of the PRA Public School District?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.